Is there an approval for the agenda format?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, second. All those approved say aye. Aye. Approval of the minutes from February 18th, 2024.
I mean, we approve the minutes as written?
Let's, I'll say aye. Aye. And so the minutes have been approved. There's no unfinished business. We have no fence installation, no modification to approved for certificate appropriate to this, no minor renovation. So let's begin with one Monroe Avenue. Ian Markley, who wishes to stain the existing brick on a single-family dwelling to install a fence, a pergola and a hot tub with screening.
Good evening. Thank you all for, everyone for coming out. So as you said, this is for one Monroe Avenue. And the applicant is seeking to stain the exterior masonry brick on the one-story, single-family dwelling. Also included for review in this application is the construction of a pergola, installation of a hot tub, installation of fence around the perimeter of the property with the front and side gates and landscape screening on the front and side of the dwelling and the pergola as well. So if you turn it over to page two, there are all of the materials. And the house stain would be a white mineral-based. And the pergola, we do have pergola information on here, but the applicant had updated that and it was emailed to you and also posted on our website. And if you have any questions, the applicant and one of his representatives is here.
Yes, I have questions.
Okay.
Good evening. Ian Markley.
I'm Kyra Rooney-Reptile.
My first question is, I saw the hot tubs already there. So I get a perspective of what you're trying to do, but I don't know that we have any hot tubs anywhere else. So this was kind of a first. So I'm thinking about how to hide it, but then go by the guidelines with the four foot in the front of the house. And I see that you have the pergola set back going around the hot tub, but I can't, I don't see from the drawing, is it the 10.4 feet from the fence like it is, the fence is at the front of the house? How far is the pergola from the fence in front of the hot tub?
It goes up.
On the front, on Monroe's side?
Yes, on the Monroe's side.
So it was going in line with the house for the side yard.
So, so the pergola is even with the house?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be the same distance, the fence to the pergola?
It won't go further, more, it won't go further out than the house. It'll be in line with the house.
Okay.
So this, this, well, actually, on the other side of the house, this is today, I know.
Right.
It goes out further. But this would be, it would be in line.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the hot tub is there.
So here is where, oh, here.
Yes, okay.
So it would be in line with this part of the house.
Okay.
So it would be the side yard.
Okay.
So it would be from this point out into the kind of, add some symmetry, add some symmetry to the house. And then it would stop.
Yeah, that's my next question. Does it stop up against the fence?
No, it doesn't.
At the back?
It would stop like on the corner of.
Of the alley?
Monroe. It would stop right here, that the pergola would.
Okay.
And then the fence would be a few more feet, allowing like the 10 feet off the alley.
Right.
The fence would be 10 feet off the alley then.
Okay, okay.
And is that screening between, financial plant screening between the fence and the pergola to make it more net and more work?
So there's really not any distance that you can walk on the side there?
There is.
So this, these plating would be like a walkway.
Okay, okay.
Because there would be, you could walk pretty much straight. You'd be, this is, you could walk right in the pergola area and then you could walk the other side.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Go back this way, Kyra, at the microphone there. They can hear you on Facebook.
So basically, basically, everything on the pergola is freestanding. It's not up against the house, it's not up against the fence or against the hot tub?
No.
Okay. And the, and the six-foot fence is just?
On the rear.
On the rear, which is actually, of course, it's kind of.
I know.
To me, it's sort of, it's behind of the house, but it's, it's between the neighbors. It's, okay.
Yes.
But there's a, there's a fence, a sort of a fence there now, isn't there? It's like six feet.
Partial.
Yeah.
Partial, it's not.
There's privacy screening, the lattice that you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes.
So does the lattice go away, is my question, or is that on somebody else's property?
That is on the neighbor's property.
Okay.
But I think.
We would coordinate with them to, we've been in touch with them about this. So we would make sure that, we would probably remove that and put the fence in its place.
Okay.
Or, or attach, or connect it to it.
Okay.
Whatever looks best.
Whatever looks better.
Yeah.
They also have some trees they planted along their property line too, so we make sure.
You're gonna move those in or?
We're okay, we're doing it.
The fence is gonna go out?
Off of our property line.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, because I think their, their trees are four feet in from the, their property line, from the property line.
Okay. Because when I walked there, so I was the one lurking outside your house on the sidewalk today. Trying to get a feel for it, so, and I noticed that there was already a lattice there and it looked like that was where the fence was going to be, the six-foot part of the fence. Is that right?
I think it's on their property.
The lattice is on their property.
Okay.
We do want to make a zoning comment relative to the lattice and this fence.
Yeah.
For any, and I do believe the applicant knows this, for, if they want to put a fence directly on the property line, they have to have the adjacent property's owners, so we would be.
We have to write permission before I can prove that's how it works.
Yeah, because I just wanted to know if both of them were gonna stay, if it was gonna go away?
I, I don't know that answer yet because we have not received the notification that achieved that approval from the adjacent property.
And he, they, he can't decide from neighboring property.
We decided not to do that and we didn't really, we were taking it off the property line, so it's not on the, on the property line.
So then the lattice is going to stick. I just want to make that clear because lattice is sticking property, that stays.
That's why I asked the question.
And I think what I was saying, we will communicate with them to see if they still want the lattice. So aesthetically, they may not want the duplicate.
Yes, if they do not want the lattice, then we could work with them.
Yeah, they, yeah, they may want to plant roses on it. I don't know. So, okay.
Did you? Well, well, we can talk about, about staining of, of the brick and, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Vice Chair?
While we're, while we're on the pergola and the fencing, I did have some minute comments from Member Glacier and she said she has no questions. She did say for the pergola, she liked the natural stain versus the white, but that's your decision. And for Ken Monarch, we did have a question about the fencing and I just want to go on the record for saying that, yes, the fence style that was on the application is approved. So, thank you.
Ken, I just asked one question, I'm sorry. You're putting in a brick area in front of the shed or that's already there? I'm sorry.
The brick area is already there.
Okay.
Okay, so with, with the staining or painting of the brick, we just, that's not recommended under our historic review guidelines.
So, yeah, so it's, so it's very clear, like in the, in our historic guidelines under 5.3 for masonry, if it's unpainted, it should remain unpainted. Well, I think it looks nice and, and I understand kind of why you want to do it. I went back through our guidelines, county guidelines, state and federal, and all of them say exactly the same thing. Unpainted masonry should remain unpainted. So, so it maintains the historic character of your 1960s house, even though it's, you know, non-contributing to the historic district.
Okay, I just wanted to bring up some fact sheets from.
Sure.
Let's see.
So the, actually, I'll give you this when I have my paper right there. But this is an historic building, I guess it was already stained, but they used their material.
Yeah, but if, if it was already painted and had been for several years, we would probably say just, okay. But if it's unpainted, it's, it's, it's in the guidelines, pretty clear that it is not allowed.
Do you have a right to make your case?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So we recognize that the preservation of original brick is the priority for this board and we fully respect the mission to maintain the historic character of Cape Charles. However, we would like to introduce mineral-based stains and paints as an alternative to traditional acrylic and latex coatings, which are known to cause long-term damage to masonry. And that's in the guidelines too. Mineral-based stains and paints were developed in the late 1800s in response to the need for a highly durable masonry coating that would not degrade over time. In fact, buildings in Europe coated with mineral paints in the 1890s will stand today without requiring maintenance. Cities such, I don't know how to pronounce it, in Switzerland and in Norway feature historic buildings with preserved brick surfaces treated with this method. And it's also, KIM has been used at the White House and a lot of other historic buildings within the United States. But the goal for, the reasoning behind this is, the houses, like the bricks are, they're not very uniform in the, the look of it. The colors are, they don't look like the other historic brick homes in town.
It might have been added at different times, so it doesn't, the kind of brick, it does not coordinate with each other. So it's, our attempt was to help the home raise its attractiveness in respect of the neighborhood. And if we made the white stain would obviously create more of a uniform look to the house as a whole, rather than having a discolored red brick.
And then also if the review board did not like the color particularly, KIM has a variety of colors we could go through to see if there is a color that would be approved that would make the home more uniform and attractive.
So it is like other 1960s bungalows with different colors of bricks. So intentionally put in, and there are some of the historic homes in the district also that have brick, unpainted brick that, that was installed at different times. So I, so I understand your reasoning. But in the end, unpainted masonry should not be painted or stained. So, and that's in keeping, so if somebody came in and said, hey, we want to, we want to preserve Monticello, we're gonna stain it. A matte stain, a clear matte stain would be approved, but it wouldn't be approved to paint it white, like the White House, which was a brick house that was originally painted and stained white. So, so, so there are some houses in the historic district which have been painted and/or stained and they are masonry style. But the guidelines for us, it's chapter five. Chapter five, section three for masonry. And it very clearly says, unpainted masonry should be main, unpainted. So, and if you had previously painted it, it could be repainted with, with the stain and I'm sure it's a very fine product. But we can't approve to paint unpainted masonry.
And then what about the prior cases, like of precedent on Monroe? I think there's another ranch on Monroe that has been painted.
They have a new home that's changing, it's been painted.
And they weren't painted before, I mean, I know that was years ago, but.
Before the guidelines.
Yeah, before the historic, probably before the historic district was created.
Can I ask a question? Is the, is the overriding purpose of the guideline to protect the brick or to protect the uniformity of the historic district or both?
Both.
Yes, both.
I mean, a lot of the houses in that area are all, are all brick.
Right, exactly. Because I guess one of the reasons why we were trying to present this information is just to say that the mineral-based stain, you know, it lets the brick breathe, so it wouldn't be causing harm. And I felt like a lot of what we were reading was focused on, you know, paint doesn't allow the same ability to breathe.
I, I agree with your argument, but it does seem like the brick could breathe, but we have to go by the guidelines.
That's why I was making sure I understood clarification for the purpose. Because again, the guidelines also want a historic district that everything, the homes look historic and beautiful and character, each one can still maintain some individual level of character. I think we're just, from our perspective, every person we meet or run into in town, out of town that sees the home, wow, it would look beautiful with a white stain. So we're just trying to marry the guidelines with what is in practice, a home that would have a white stain. But I'm barking up my.
You kind of are.
Yes.
I, I mean, I don't mean to be flip, but I mean, I looked at, I, so I went back and did a lot of research because I, I think it would look nice. But, but that doesn't maintain the, the historic aspects of your 1960s style room.
Did you read it?
Yeah.
So before you make a motion, excuse me, I see Member Monarch is here, so if he, once he sits down, he can say what he wrote in, but as far as Member Glacier, she said section 5.6A, unpainted masonry should remain unpainted. Brick is porous and retains moisture. If you seal it, moisture will be trapped and this could lead to damage.
So it's not sealing? It wouldn't be sealing with that product?
It's stained.
Yes, and it, and it, I, I just brought up an image. Can I show you?
Where it just allows it to be.
Yeah, so you can apply waterproofing coatings to masonry, but they have to be clear matte vapor permeable water repellent. So, so even with, if you stained it with, if you used that product that was clear matte and maintained the appearance of the brick that's there, not coloring it, that would be fine.
Okay, so it, it does meet all of the standards there except for the color?
Yeah.
The change.
The color change?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if it was a clear matte stain that was put on there, so a mineral coating? So, because you can, you can't apply waterproof coatings, but you can do a clear matte vapor permeable water repellent in order to, to maintain your brick. And that's in.
I have it forward.
Five dash three, paragraph six B.
Could you, could you sign me?
No, that's, that's my.
No, I can read yours if you're not quite ready yet. That was Kathy's.
This is Member Monarch. He said, according to the guidelines, unpainted masonry should remain unpainted.
I'm sorry.
So it's in your stain?
Yeah, it's a mineral stain that, or paint, I just brought up my documents. It's vapor permeable. And there's a product sheet, it's about four pages over here. But it's been used since the 1800s on historic homes and it is extremely weather resistant, fire resistant, and it just.
If it breathes naturally, that's illegal.
Yeah, breathes naturally.
Yeah, so the guidelines do say that you can do, they can, you can use a product like that, but it has to be a clear matte finish to go over top of it.
Okay.
Do you have anything else to add?
Yeah. Everybody else?
Yes.
Okay, so we have an approval for the, the fence, an approval for the pergola and the hot tub. Are we okay on that? So we're, so we're, everything, let's have a motion on that we approve the fence, the pergola, the hot tub, but not the stain.
You're not really approving the hot tub now?
No.
That's actually allowed under.
Well, okay.
But, but so you're approving the fence, the pergola? And what else? And I don't, I'm not, I'm unclear where you are on this.
The stain.
And, and not approving the stain.
So, so how about we take a vote just on the fence and the pergola?
It's a part of.
No, that's not part of it.
Okay.
So, so do I have a motion to approve the fence and the pergola as presented?
Second. I make a motion to accept it as presented, the pergola and the fence.
The second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Say aye. Aye.
Now, now go ahead and take up a motion relative to the brick stain. Somebody needs to make a motion, what your position is on the brick stain.
So, you want me to do that?
Go.
Okay, so I move that we deny approval of the colored stain to be put on in accordance with the paragraph, so section 5.3 on masonry in the historic guidelines, that it should remain unpainted. If it needs a coating on it, it should be a clear matte vaporized vapor permeable water repellent could be put onto it, but it's not to change the appearance of the masonry itself.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Okay, do you want to keep the documents or?
Okay. Now we have a 208 Bay Avenue.
This application is for 208 Bay Avenue. Applicants are Coastal Craftsman Builders LLC. They're representing the owners, Brian and Conleen and Martin. They are here to renovate the home and do an addition. They're replacing the front and side porching flooring from the five-quarter by six with three one-quarter tongue and groove AZAC. The windows, I have a list of windows here. So they're basically replacing the windows that also you have a sketch that the applicant provided. So four nine-over wood, wood and vinyl will be replaced with the same nine-over-one single divided lights colonial style double hung vinyl. And then three of the twelve-over-one wood and/or vinyl will be replaced with the twelve-over-one single divided light colonial style double hung vinyl. You have two that are one-over-one wood and they'll be, and/or vinyl, and they will be replaced with one-over-one double hung vinyl windows. And all of these one crew will include the half screens. And then we have one of the one-over windows that they are decreasing the size on. And then we have one of the twelve-over-one wood windows that will be replaced with the aluminum door, so they can get to the rear addition. Also included here, we have the siding. They will replace as needed with the Hardy Shake, which is existing. And the front walkway will, they will be replacing, sorry, the existing concrete with the blue stone that they would like to use on the walking path. The new addition is the rear screen and porch. They're having a rear parking pad. A addition to the fence that they already have, I do, they want, they want to complete it with the same as existing and the accessory structure. And that will include a ramp. And I do understand that some of this is in the rear, but so we wouldn't have to do two different applications and two different application fees. The applicant put it all on one application, so you're reviewing everything tonight.
Anybody have any questions?
Who's got Sam's Coastal Craftsman Builders?
I saw something about tempered windows?
Yes.
Those are not the windows that are like shiny or?
No, you, you'll not even tell the difference.
And then my other question was, why are you making the windows smaller in the back?
We actually are not gonna make the ones smaller anymore.
Oh, you're not?
We're gonna leave it the way it is.
Okay.
I had one question. Underneath the porch, is there an enter, an entryway there, a door? Are you coming underneath the existing porch?
Where we're gonna have the screen porch, you mean?
Yeah, but the way it looks is.
There's a basement door currently in the back that we're gonna build a screen porch over the top of, so there will be an access point to get to that through the lattice that we're gonna put up underneath the screen, uh, screen porch.
I saw the, the shower. Is, is there a back to the shower? Because I couldn't see.
There's an existing deck on the back of the house right now. We're gonna basically put the shower to that and then build a little roof over the top of it. So it's gonna come out about five feet from the existing deck. So the deck will be the backdrop of the shower. It'll get closed in, but I mean, it's, it's what is already there.
Yeah, I just, I remember I had to just find it. There was something about you couldn't build a shower up against the house.
It's not against the house, it's against the deck.
It's against the deck.
Mm-hmm. Which is eight feet off the house.
Any other questions?
From Member, sorry, from Member Glacier. She was asking if you were keeping the original frames on the windows?
Yes.
Okay, and?
On, uh, that's not true. On most of them, we are. On two of them that are, I don't even know what they are. There's, they're probably three inches out of square on the back of the house. We're gonna change the frame and everything on those. There's no. We're going to change the frame and everything on those. There's no way you can even get a window in there. That's where we were going to shrink the one window, but we're not going to do that anymore, and that's where the Hardy siding is on the back. So those two will be a whole new frame, window, everything.
She just said if not, they need to have the one and a half inch sill. And then her other question was if the shed would have shutters.
I have no idea. I don't know if the shed will have shutters or not.
I think we're just going by the example that was presented, the...
Yeah, I think that's just a, a concept drawing, basically. I mean, they haven't even, they were going to try to get one pre-made, but the shipping, they couldn't ship that size down the road. So then they're asking about shipping a kit that would build one like that, or if I just stick build it. So we're kind of undecided on it, but that's similar to what it'll look like.
Yeah, pretty simple, I mean, simple.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll need a motion to...
And there was one statement that was made that was incorrect. The back window that's being removed, we're going to put a door in.
Right.
That'll be a fifteen light glass door, not a aluminum door. The aluminum door will be put from the porch that's existing now that'll enter into the screen porch. So there'll be an actual real door, which will look identical to the one that's on the side porch currently on the house.
So there's, there's going to be two doors empty now on the, on that deck?
No, one, from the house out to the deck, but then from the screen porch to the deck that's currently on the back of the house, we'll have a screen door, which is the aluminum door that she's referencing.
Okay.
So, so if I'm understanding this correctly, the last two bullet points under windows, that's no longer a smaller window, that's just going to be an equal sized dimensional window. And that last bullet point, we're taking out the words aluminum storm to be at last door, and putting a notation identical to the existing side door in the book.
Yes.
Just when you guys are making your motions.
And I want to hear all that.
Oh, time to go. Okay.
Actually, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't know, if you still have questions, keep going.
Yeah.
We need to know whether it's going to be a kit or, um, just custom built within the shed.
All right. I need a motion.
I said, could we move that, that, um, uh, the, uh, let's see. Move that we approve, uh, the renovations as stated with the changes that Katie, uh, uh, announced.
For the door in the, in the window?
In the window.
Storm door and window.
Yeah, as amended by Katie Moon Yes during the meeting.
Did we get it all? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Second.
Second, so, sorry. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, five oh nine Harbor Avenue.
Sorry, I got the other five. Okay, this is for five oh nine Harbor Avenue. We have QS LLC as the applicants, representing the owner, Lou Ellen Blackwilder. The applicant is seeking to construct a new addition of a rear, a new addition with a rear second story deck above the new addition. The, the rear additions do propose the removal of two windows, which will be to add a door and a bigger window. And on the back, you'll see the materials list. And just for the record, you can see this, the back of, the rear of this home from Bay Avenue, so that's why you all are actually reviewing this rear addition, because it can be seen from public view of the street. And the applicants are here, if you'd like to speak with them.
Anybody have any questions?
Sean Ingram, QS LLC.
How would the new room intersect with the existing porch and room?
So, so currently, there is a room coming off the back. It's a utility, um, room primarily, and it's a small screen and porch. We will actually disassemble that and then incorporate that square footage within a new structure.
And then the, um, the rear second floor deck flooring is...
Yeah, so it'll be a flat roof with a TPO, rubber roof membrane, and then a floating AZAC deck floor on top of it. What you'll be able to see from the street really will just be a white handrail. Nothing else really will be able to be seen from the street. I mean, they have the unfortunate, um, aspect of it being viewed from the backyard while there's empty lots there, but so from the front street, nothing can be seen, but we're going to be able to look at it, you'll just see a white handrail. It's very similar to a lot of, like, his house on Bay Avenue with the, was similar on their front porch.
I was just, AZAC's not good for a ceiling.
No, no, no. The AZAC will simply be to step on, there'll be, there'll be a membrane, flat roof membrane with a slight pitch for drainage on the roof.
Does that need to be documented?
It says rubber roof and...
It says rubber.
Yeah, yeah, and there, you know, there's some, there's some idiosyncrasies in TPO versus rubber and that sort of thing. I think there's a type of rubber and...
So are the windows going to match the other windows for the house? I mean, I see that, that you have...
So we have window sizes in the application. Um, the bedroom requires egress, so it'll be three oh five oh. I'm not certain whether that matches any existing sizes or not. Um, the bathrooms will be two oh three oh, pretty standard bathroom sizes. So the sizes of windows matching the existing house, that's, you know, a little bit questionable. I think the upper windows are close to three oh five oh, but they probably aren't. Older houses didn't generally meet code for egress in those days, um, but we are limited by code for, for egress size.
I, I had a question, and it may just be the drawing.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is the porch, the corne, I mean, the, the stairs, is that being moved? Or is, it's, you're expanding right to the, to the left of the door?
The stairs coming off the rear of the house?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so what you see in the original picture is a set of stairs coming off. It would be as if you just took that entire structure and drug it straight back. That would be the static that you would wind up...
So basically where that pole is in the, in the photograph?
Yeah, but it pretty much follows the footprint of what's existing. It's just, it's elongated, basically.
Okay. Any other questions?
So it, it's going to take up, according to, I guess, the calculations, it's going to take up like almost forty-five percent of the lot, just the house.
I, I couldn't answer that. You know, I didn't review the numbers of the lot.
So there's no structure behind the house, though.
Well, there is existing. It comes off the house about seven foot six, I believe it says. Um, so we are adding a considerable amount. We're adding another twenty feet, I believe. Um, so, you know, we're adding probably about twenty percent of the existing footprint, maybe twenty-five, something to that effect.
And you're fully in compliance with zoning.
Correct, we're fully in compliance with zoning. Thank you, ladies. I should have just deferred immediately.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll take a, a motion to approve the renovations at five oh nine Madison Ave... No, excuse me, five oh nine Harbor Avenue. All those in favor?
Second.
Do I have a motion? Who made the motion?
Nobody yet.
I like the motion. I move that we approve...
Got it.
Approve as, as stated in the application.
I believe Ken, Ken actually said that you advance, yes.
So there is no, there is no outdoor shower, even though it was...
No outdoor shower.
Can I sidebar that outdoor shower question real quick? Is that, is that becoming a big issue in town, outdoor showers?
You just have to have screenings.
Just about everybody wants one.
Right. I heard earlier you can't put it up against the house?
You cannot.
It's got to have some kind of bound, bound, between.
You can't bolt it to the house. It could be, okay. So you may want to clarify that. It can be up against the house, can't be attached. Got it. Good. That's that one. Thank you. Thank you for indulging me on that.
They're trying to protect the siding.
Got you. We're good. You guys voted? Great. Thank you very much.
Wow, okay. Let me get the phone number, because Mr. Dudak at five oh nine Madison Avenue will be our call in.
Hello, this is Joe.
Good, good evening, Joe. This is Tracy on the Historic District Review Board.
Hi, how are you doing?
Great.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can. We can. So we have Joe on the phone. And what he is trying to do is he is seeking to finish construction on a rear accessory structure. It was started, but he has since come in to fill out all the paperwork. As you can see, it's a fourteen by eighteen with a asphalt roof. Siding is T one eleven. He's got the doors down here. The windows will be a Pella one fifty series. The trim will be PVC, and he's saying the foundation is gravel. And just, just a correction on the total lot coverage breakdown, it did have the wrong street. This is five, uh, five oh nine Madison. It is for the correct one. It just, I do believe it had five oh nine Harbor.
That was the other one.
So this was, um, a little confusing to me, and Tracy, maybe you can clarify, but the application says a storage shed, and I'm looking at a picture of a accessory dwelling.
No, well, it's in a, I don't, yeah, there you go.
You can, you can go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I, does, I thought that was, that was for me. Does it, it should fall within the size for the shed. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it does. And here, can I just state that we're not doing uses here? You all are here strictly for the exterior of the building.
I, I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Sorry, I, I just was explaining that we're here for the exterior of the building. They're here to review the exterior of the building, not so much the use.
Oh, okay.
And in spite of it being an after fact, it's, it is within zoning.
It is. Everything he came in, it's in, in compliance with zoning.
Including the use as a shed.
Yes, and including the use of a shed. He, I do believe, um, Joe, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, yeah.
I do believe he said that this is just going to be a storage shed.
It will not be an accessory.
Not an accessory dwelling.
Is there, looks like an upstairs big enough that they're just...
And they can have a, a relatively two-story shed.
So there, there will be some, uh, storage, like a, a, I guess, attic space for storage. We, if you've seen our house, it's, it's very small.
Yep.
So, uh, we need every little bit of storage we can get for beach equipment, the golf cart in the, you know, to pull it in the shed itself. And, uh, so that's why we tried to get as much as we can while staying within the parameters of the shed size.
Okay.
So the purpose of the second floor is not for living purposes, it's only for storage?
Oh, no, that is correct.
Which is why I don't see, I didn't see any stairs, interior, exterior, because you're just going to have an open...
Correct.
Open joists, okay.
Yeah, there, there is an opening, there is an opening there, uh, but there is no, there are no stairs.
And Member Glacier, she just asked about the T one eleven material. I guess...
So, uh, T one eleven is referred to the type of siding, siding that I, I think I've put in four or five pictures of the surrounding sheds that are all, um, in line with my property behind me and to the left and right. That is what they have as well. It's, it's basically like a sheeted good that has the, um, that shed profile of the vertical siding, um, so that it blends in with the other, uh, sheds in the area.
Yeah, like my shed, which is like two doors down.
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions? Could I have a, a motion to...
Yeah, I, I make a motion to approve five, five oh nine Madison Avenue, application as is.
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thanks, Joe.
All right, thank you so much.
Yep, we're going to hang up on you now.
All right, take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay, so change of plans. We do not have to call. We actually have an applicant here to present our next one, so... These application is for tax map number eighty-three A three four dash X on Mason Avenue, Strawberry Plaza, as it's notably known as. So this is to install a clock. And they have provided, the applicants have provided us all of the information about the style of the clock, the face of the clock, the materials. And it looks like from the, if I'm correct, on the drawing that they sent, it's going to be centered. It's centering Strawberry Plaza, yeah. I will let you, if you have any questions, you can ask the applicant.
Hey, my name is Mark Usri, and I thank you for letting us present this today. It's, the, the clock is, is designed to be at the front of Strawberry Plaza toward Mason, in line with the two hand buildings. Uh, the base will be a concrete with, will be concrete, but it'll be about two feet tall, and then covered with brick or brick veneer to match the hand buildings. And the clock stands, I believe, a total of almost twelve feet, plus the two feet base will be a fourteen foot tall clock. Uh, the design folks with Main Street have asked that the clock face, face north and south once it's installed, so you can see it from Strawberry Street and from the Harbor District as well. Um, the money was, was raised from a number of folks in town, uh, and we have enough money for the clock and for the, um, the base that it's going to be sitting on. So it's to, it's to actually, it's to honor that one hundredth anniversary of the Rotary Club here in town. Uh, there'll be a plaque on one side doing, that says something to be determined, hopefully today, tonight. Uh, we had a meeting today, and, um, on the other side, it'll be a, a plaque with the donors' names and the amounts donated. Both bronze.
I just have a question. This is an electric clock.
It is.
So how do you get, or is that something that zoning does?
The town is actually already arranging, they're doing the wiring, um, on the ground up. So it'll be all connected.
Okay, underneath.
Yeah, yeah, I met with Ralph Bowen and Bob Panic and I met on the plaza, and, and other folks were part of that meeting at different times, and have the place set up, and they don't believe there's a problem with getting wiring underground directly to there.
Yeah, I've actually seen these clocks in other towns. They're very nice.
They are, they are nice, and these, yeah, this is kind of the top of the line on these types of clocks. This company has amazing recommendations, and, and the great thing is it's, it's back, it's got a backup, so if powers out, it automatically comes back to the right time. Uh, it, it adjusts for daylight savings time, adjusts back for daylight savings time. All of that is, is built into the, the works of the clock, so it's very cool. Minimal hassle for the town staff as far as maintaining it and, and keeping it going.
And the architectural style is, um, like I've seen some, at some railroad stations. Um, so I, I think it's in keeping with the, with the town's char... I think it's in keeping with the, with the town's character.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the clock?
I make a motion to approve the clock and the application as is.
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, we have other business.
You have before you the monthly report. These are the activities that have occurred since we last met in February. We have approved quite a few minor exemptions through, through my approval authority. They are all listed by address and the specific items that we approved. I'm happy to try and recall them all if you have any questions on any particular one. Otherwise, I'm going to keep on moving. I know repeatedly for the last few months, we have continued to say that we've done no compliance checks from, from our zoning officer at this. It is something that is coming back around into our offices, some of our workload is finally getting concluded on some major projects for the town. So yes, we have been talking with, with the full staff and trying to bring that back both into Tracy and Jack's capacity to get back out into the field and start doing compliance checks on the approved certificates of appropriateness that you have issued from this board. So in the next few months, you will start to see some detail come into item number two. Lastly, we had a violation notice that we issued at 645 Taswell, and a stop work order was issued on February 26. And the contractor came in almost immediately to come and resolve that violation and file the appropriate paperwork to move that forward. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. So yes, we are pursuing violations, including, yes, one of the violations that was acted upon this evening for the accessory structure, because again, that was a project where they had not submitted their paperwork, and we stopped them and brought them in here, so. We are still aggressively going after any, any violations as they come to our attention. I can't say that we are actively out in the field spotting them ourselves, but we are responding to any complaints that come into the office relative to those, so. And that's all I have for your monthly report, unless you have any questions for me. Excellent, okay.
All right. Well, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
So moved, we are adjourned.